Good evening, everybody. Madam Clerk?
We need a motion to adjourn...
Need a motion to adjourn the closed session, executive session meeting, please.
Offer.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Von Rudenberg?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Pataglia?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus?
Aye.
And then we need a motion to adjourn the COW.
Need a motion to adjourn the COW session.
Offer.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Von Rudenberg?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Pataglia?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus?
Aye.
This meeting is being held in accordance with the Open Publics Meeting Act, NJ SA 10:4-6-SSEC, notice of which was sent to the record in the Star Ledger and was posted on the municipal bulletin board. Councilmember Von Rudenberg?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Sims?
Here.
Councilmember Pataglia?
Here.
Would everybody please rise for the flag salute?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice supreme.
Thank you. Okay. A couple proclamations tonight celebrating a couple different things. We're gonna... One, I will read... I know, I don't think there's anybody here for it, but it's about Breast Cancer Month, and it reads, "Whereas breast cancer affects hundreds of thousands of women and thousands of men annually, breast cancer is typically detected either during a screening examination before symptoms have developed or after symptoms have developed when a man or woman feels a lump. And whereas breast cancer is about 100 times more common in women than men, and women are at an increased risk as they get older, and whereas breast cancer is often hereditary, and individuals whose family history puts them at increased risk for breast cancer should discuss with their doctor or qualified health professionals proper prevention and early diagnosis strategies. And whereas, since the early 1990s, the pink ribbon, handed out and spread by the Susan G. Komen Foundation, has been the symbol for the fight against breast cancer. And whereas, October is Breast Cancer Awareness Month, an opportunity to increase awareness of the disease and to encourage individuals to have a plan to detect this disease in its early stages. And whereas, it is vital that those affected by cancer have access to quality, affordable care, and that research of all forms of breast cancer continue to be vigorously supported. Now therefore, I, John P. LaBrus Jr., mayor of the city of Hackensack, along with the members of the city council, do hereby recognize the month of October as Breast Cancer Awareness Month in the city of Hackensack." I know several people affected with... who have had breast cancer, some that we lost, some that are still fighting it. It's an ongoing battle. Very, very important for everybody to be aware of this and to be checked and make sure you have all your proper screenings done. And, you know, we have to keep fighting this battle. It's a winnable battle. That's the key. It's a winnable battle. If it's early detection, they stand a very good chance of surviving this insidious disease. Anybody else from the council would like to speak on this? No?
If the mayor doesn't mind, this past weekend, I went out with a Girl Scout troop from New Hope Baptist Church, and they gave each one of us ribbons. If you didn't mind if I gave them that proclamation.
Sure, absolutely. That'd be wonderful.
And I will say that we lost a dear friend, yes, last week. The lady was a... used to live in Wilson Street, the Giovanni family. She was only like a 53-year-old. She was fighting like for nine years. She died from breast cancer. So we should be going, try to get an early screening, and then we can take care of the problem.
Okay. Is there anybody here from Hackensack Hospital? From the Pastoral Care Department? Because I do have one for the Pastoral Care Department at Hackensack University Medical Center. And whereas this is also Pastoral Care Week, recognizes the work of pastoral care professionals and volunteers serving the spiritual needs of patients and staff of healthcare facilities. And whereas Pastoral Care Week is a national observance under the auspices of the Association for Clinical Pastoral Education. And whereas Pastoral Care Week will be celebrated this year from October 22nd through October 28th, and this year's theme is hospitality, focusing on the need to serve all and make all people feel welcome. And whereas Pastoral Care is provided at Hackensack University Medical Center by a team of six chaplains, four Roman Catholic priests, and over 100 volunteers under the leadership of Reverend Dr. David Armstrong. And whereas, the city of Hackensack recognizes the work of the chaplains and the pastoral care volunteers in providing spiritual care and holistic support to the patients and staff at Hackensack University Medical Center. Now therefore, I, John P. LaBrus Jr., mayor of the city of Hackensack, along with the members of the city council, do hereby recognize October 22nd through October 28th as Pastoral Care Week in the city of Hackensack. I can tell you from experience from working at the medical center, the job that these folks do is incredible. Every day, they go to every room. They offer communion to all the patients that would like it. You know, we have a lot of different denominations, religions, and all their needs are met at the hospital. They work hand-in-hand with the clergy as they come in. Unfortunately, in a hospital, there are some heartbreaking moments where you need pastoral care, and, you know, the strength and fortitude that they have to do it and the comfort they bring to the families is incredible. So it's much appreciated. So I'll make sure that gets over to Dr. Armstrong. All right, moving forward. Approval of minutes for the COW and a regular meeting on September 12th, 2017. I need a motion.
Mayor, you were absent for this meeting.
I was absent for...
Just for the COW, I think.
Just for the COW.
But just because we can do them separate if you want.
No, just... I'll abstain. They'll go through. So for the COW and regular meeting of September 12th, 2017, need a motion?
Offer.
Second.
Need a roll call?
Councilmember Von Rudenberg?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Pataglia?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus?
I'll abstain. And I need a motion for the approval of the minutes for the COW and regular, and COW, September 26th, 2017.
Offer.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Von Rudenberg?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Pataglia?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus?
Aye.
City manager's report.
Good evening, mayor and council, invited guests. City manager's report for October 24th, 2017. The city, in its two-way conversion of Main Street and State Street, is still underway. We're using our signboards. We're getting close to the completion. I hope to have all of the construction done before Thanksgiving. Our traffic engineer, Brightview Engineering, is doing the inspections and paying attention to the details. So hopefully, we will come to some closure. Then we're gonna reassess all of the expenses and what workforce to make this redevelopment done for conversion to Two Way Street before we start, obviously, on Main Street. Main Street will obviously bring a few more challenges than we were exposed to with State Street. I remind all of the residents that the leaf pickup, all leaves should be placed in brown recyclable bags, no plastic. Each resident can pick up one free bundle of 15 bags at the DPW at 120 East Broadway Street, second floor, starting October 1st. We've been giving out bags. Obviously, it's not mandatory to residents, but obviously, the EPA is asking for compliance, because obviously, if these leaves get into storm drains, it builds silt and other conditions for storm water management. So eventually, this is gonna become the protocol. So we're just trying to get people to start to make the conversion also. Bags are much easier for the city to pick up, and if you have a snowstorm and all those leaves are in the street, and then you plow the snow, it makes a complete mess of the city. On Saturday morning, this coming Saturday, at 8:00 a.m., there will be a goal setting meeting that the public is invited to. Mayor and council will be there. I've solicited goals from department heads, employees, the mayor and council. What we're trying to do is to establish the goals that the city needs and make sure that we, one, identify these goals, fund these goals, and then process that. Unfortunately, the city always has and always will have issues and needs to address, but those needs need to be met and completed. And by setting goals and establishing those goals, we can all work in concert to achieve them. And obviously, having them funded takes out, well, I thought you were gonna start this, and you didn't finish it, you didn't get that done, so we're gonna try this. I've used it in other municipalities where I was employed, and it's been successful. The H-PAC grand opening for the ribbon cutting was supposed to be set in a date. That date has now been changed, so the ribbon cutting will be determined, but has not been established yet. But it'll either be posted on the website, or I'll make acknowledgement as soon as it's been determined. The issue of the Midtown Bridge update, the completion has been impacted due to delays of fabrication and delivery of steel bridge components, as well as some extra work that is required by the county. The material supply delay and extra work pushes the project completion date back to approximately 90 days. Substantial completion is expected in February of 2018. The county expects the bridge to be open to traffic at that time. The contractor will need to return in the spring for approximately one week to complete all items that cannot be completed during the winter months. The other issue that I added tonight was the crosswalks for the ADA drop curbs. There was some conversation that was made in the past about adding new crosswalks and the implementation of them. Sadly, just painting crosswalks isn't the only solution that the city has to consider. In order to provide crosswalks, these locations where they should be provided under the ADA accessible ramps and improvements to existing sidewalks, this can be done at most intersecting street locations. However, we have identified that there will need to be a study done, and I would suggest, and this comes from our engineer, that $45,000 per location for planned specs and construction will cost for some of these complicated intersections. The following locations will be addressed in this manner and studied. Prospect and Golf Place, Prospect and Berry, Prospect and American Legion Drive, Summit and Berry, Polyfly from Lodi Street to Route 80 Exit Ramp, Polyfly from Lodi Street to Essex. Regarding Essex Street, Essex and Summit to Espinade, there is no intersecting streets but a long distance with no crosswalks. Raw... Excuse me. Long crosswalks, or I should say, no crosswalks on long streets is a real problem. So they have to be studied because they have to be safe. A very long distance, but mid-block crosswalks are very dangerous and can cost as much as $100,000 or more for proper sidewalks and improvements to either include flashing beacon lights or hawk signals, depending on the results of the study. So to take all this information in, the city of Hackensack, which is committed to doing this the right way, is gonna have to do some study. So obviously, there's a cost assessed to that. None of that money was implemented or set aside for the 2017. So obviously, I will be inserting this because it is a safety issue for one of our engineers to research this and come up with a price on how we can make the city safer. Because this council spends a lot of time calling me on daily basis for every issue, condition that they feel is either unsafe or should be addressed with frequency. And I get these phone calls from them probably two to one compared to what I get from residents. But we are trying to make this better, and it just takes some time. So we are addressing these issues as they come up, and I think the city will be, each year, better and better because of, one, the input that we get from residents and the commitment of the mayor and council. And that would complete my report, sir.
Thank you. Any comments before we move forward?
Just one. Just so the folks that are watching this on the internet or TV, man, crosswalk issues are those... many of those were brought up at the condo board meeting. So for those folks that attended that meeting and took the time to document a lot of these issues, that was forwarded to the city manager, and, you know, hopefully we'll continue to look into those as safety issues for the city. Thanks, Ted.
Okay. So move on with business. Resolution 379-17.
This is a resolution for final adoption of ordinance number 34-2017, and ordinance to repeal and replace ordinance number 27-2017 adopting the Continental Plaza redevelopment plan consisting of Block 512.01 Lot 6, Block 513 Lot 1, and Block 514 Lot 1. This ordinance has been advertised pursuant to law and now calls for a public hearing.
Motion to open to the public, please.
Offer.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Von Rudenberg?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Pataglia?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus?
Aye.
Anybody who'd like to speak on this ordinance, and this ordinance only, please come forward. Seeing no members of the public, motion to close to the public?
Offer.
Second. Roll call.
Councilmember Von Rudenberg?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Pataglia?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus?
Aye.
Now I need a motion to adopt the ordinance.
Offer.
Roll call.
Councilmember Von Rudenberg?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Pataglia?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus?
Aye.
Be it resolved by the city council, the city of Hackensack, County of Bergen, and state of New Jersey that ordinance number 34-2017 has passed the second reading and is hereby adopted. Sorry about that.
Thank you. Resolution 380-17.
One, two, and words in there. This is a resolution adopting the agreement between the city of Hackensack and the Hackensack School Traffic Guards, Teamsters Local 97 of New Jersey, for the period January 1st, 2017 through June 30th, 2018.
Need a motion, please.
Offer.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Von Rudenberg?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Pataglia?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus?
Aye.
Resolution 381-17.
A resolution authorizing the tax collector to convert below charges to property liens for 219 Wilson Avenue in the amount of $5,950.
Need a motion, please.
Offer. Second.
Got the second?
That was Councilmember Pataglia, second?
Yeah, that's fine.
Councilmember Von Rudenberg?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Pataglia?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus?
Aye.
Resolution 382-17.
This is a resolution authorizing exemption for 1 Fairmount Avenue, which is the Latin American Council of the Pentecostal Church of God, Inc., for 2017 tax year at 100%, and thereafter, according to the New Jersey State Statute 54:04.30.
Need a motion, please.
Offer.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Von Rudenberg?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Pataglia?
No.
Mayor LaBrus?
Aye.
Resolution 384-17?
That's 383.
383-17? My apologies.
Resolution authorizing tax refunds for overpayment.
A motion, please.
Offer.
Oh, I'm sorry. I got the wrong one. And that one, that was the lien for 219 Wilson Avenue?
Which one?
I say, aye.
What you meant?
Was it 382? What, the church, right?
Right, that was 382.
Yeah, that's not for me.
Okay, that's what you said?
Sorry.
Okay. Okay, so right now, we're on 383-17, resolution authorizing tax refunds for overpayment. I have an intro from Deputy Mayor Sims. We need a second. Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Von Rudenberg?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Pataglia?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus?
Aye.
Motion to pay the bills. Resolution 384-17.
Resolution authorizing payment of bills.
Offer. Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Von Rudenberg?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Pataglia?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus?
Aye.
Resolution 385-17.
This is a resolution of the city council of the city of Hackensack authorizing settlement of litigation entitled Sarah Melvagea versus the city of Hackensack et al., United States District Court, District of New Jersey, case number 2:17-CV-02520-ES-SCM.
Need a motion, please.
Offer. Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Von Rudenberg?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Pataglia?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus?
Aye.
Okay, before I go into the consent agenda, does anybody have any conflicts in the consent agenda? Seeing none? Move forward with the consent agenda, please.
The following items are considered to be routine in nature and will be enacted in one motion. Any items requiring expenditure are supported by a certification of availability of funds, and any item requiring discussion will be removed from the consent agenda, and the consent agenda items will be reflected in full in the minutes, including any exceptions and/or additions. The consent agenda consists of Resolution 386-17 through Resolution 395-17. 386-17 is a resolution authorizing recreation refunds for Polyfly and Side Park permits, security deposits that were returned. Resolution 387-17 is a resolution authorizing the participation of the city of Hackensack in the inter-local agreement for mutual aid plan and rapid deployment force within Bergen County. Resolution 388-17 is a resolution authorizing the renewal of liquor licenses, which were pocket licenses, for the 12/39 special ruling for Big Al's LLC and K-Coo LLC for the 2017-2018 year. Resolution 389-17 is a resolution to correct Resolution 358-17 authorizing extension of Jeanette Diamante's family leave of absence for an additional three weeks with return to work on November 6th, 2017. Resolution 390-17 is a resolution authorizing the release of escrow for 2 University Plaza in the amount of $5,106.36. Resolution 391-17 is a resolution authorizing the release of escrow for 29 Linden Street in the amount of $4,595. Resolution 392-17 is a resolution authorizing the release of escrow for 60 Kansas Street in the amount of $1,260. Resolution 393-17 is a resolution authorizing release of escrow for 74 Byrne Street in the amount of $1,505. Resolution 394-17 is a resolution authorizing the release of escrow for 100 Polyfly Road in the amount of $372.50. And Resolution 395-17 is a resolution authorizing the release of escrow for 433 Hackensack Avenue in the amount of $27.36. Need a motion?
Need a motion, please.
Offer. Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Von Rudenberg?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Pataglia?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus?
Aye.
Okay. I need a motion to open to the public, please.
Offer.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Von Rudenberg?
Aye.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Pataglia?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus?
Aye.
It's time anybody from the public who would like to speak, please come forward. Give your name and address to the clerk, and you'll have three minutes.
Good evening, mayor and council of the city of Hackensack. Ryan Roy, 167 North Lesswing Avenue, Salisbury Township, New Jersey, 07663. Looks like it's a full house with everybody aboard, and I'm sorry I didn't really attend last month's meeting because of being busy with my, you know, personal and professional life. So I actually wanna really address, you know, since Councilwoman Von Rudenberg's here, that I actually was hoping if we can actually create the Access World Committee for the city of Hackensack, because we wanna really create more of a circle, a community that interlinks most of families who has children with special needs, people with disabilities, and especially senior citizens, to even include, you know, Mayor LaBrus, and especially police, EMT, and fire department involved, and even recreation as well. Because I believe it is very important that to really create, you know, barrier-free, you know, that really, you know, stands in a way for people with disabilities. And I'm very proud that you're actually making, redeveloping all the streets and the sidewalks that has to be ADA compliant. So I really appreciate it, and all the things that you're actually doing, especially, you know, in my part, as an autism advocate, this is kind of very important that, you know, this has to, you know, going through accordingly, and I wanna really make a difference. So, yeah.
Thank you, Ryan. Appreciate it. Does the Councilwoman Von Rudenberg have your information on this?
No, I need your information. Does Ms. Congleton have it?
It's a call the Access World, is that what you just called it?
Access For All Committee. That's through the Bergen County's...
Spread it here and...
We passed the resolution.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Well, this way, yeah.
This way he can get the information. Thank you, Councilwoman. Thank you, Ryan. Appreciate it. Batter up. Who's next?
The name of your group. The name of your group.
Mary Walsh, 64 Davis Avenue, Hackensack. You appointed me a member of the Shade Tree Committee last meeting, I think, so thanks. Thanks for that.
Mm-hmm.
So I thought I'd put my responsibilities into action and say a couple words about the proposed M&M destruction of that open space over near the St. Francis School. According to the master plan of Hackensack, one of your tenants is to provide sufficient space for a variety of recreational uses and open the space to meet the needs of all citizens. To put in a building of this size at the expense of those who can't speak for themselves, mainly the children who play in the park, does not really meet the needs of this body. The master plan also states that you are to promote the conservation of open space to prevent degradation of the environment through improper use of land. So when you knock down those trees that are, would be replaced by concrete, now you're asking for flooding because the trees have a distinct purpose, to suck up that water from rain. And I know you're familiar with that tremendous flooding in that section of town anyway, so if you're gonna take out more trees, now you're gonna have more flooding. The... Another aspect of the master plan is to maintain and enhance the quality of established neighborhoods in Hackensack. So certainly, to have a neighborhood park where kids are playing would certainly maintain the quality of that neighborhood. So perhaps you can revisit the plan to keep the trees and the open space. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Next, please.
Kathleen Savelo, Lodi Street, Hackensack. Good evening again.
Thank you.
Through the chair, or through the mayor, to the attorney, Mr. Kleiman. We need a resolution regarding the recommendation made by the planning board to commit for the M&M building. When are we gonna see that resolution?
Why do you believe that's the case?
I believe it because we're spending public funds, and because we didn't do it right the first time, and we had to go back with Section 40 to have the review by the planning board, and now we're back to square one, so it needs a resolution because you're expending public funds to... And we don't know. Are you doing it? Are you not doing it? Talk about being transparent. We hear rumors that you're doing it. First, you said you weren't doing it. Nobody has committed to say what's going on. So I would like a resolution committing, you know, a resolution regarding the recommendation made by the planning board to commit. What's going on? What are you keeping everything not transparent?
We are doing it. We have been transparent. We stated...
We are doing it. We said we're doing it. So we need a resolution saying that we're doing it because we're spending public funds.
You already awarded the contract. This was a courtesy review only.
Contract was awarded, was done by resolution.
Yeah, the award of the contract was done publicly by resolution in an open and transparent process.
But it was done before, before you went back to the planning board. We made you go back to the planning board.
It was just a courtesy review. It was not a decision-making process with the planning board.
I don't... First of all, I believe the planning board review took place before the contract was awarded in any event.
We did it again. We did too.
But the planning board recommended that you do, you listen to the people, and the people said, "Do not put it there." So you're not, you're going against what the people said.
The planning board... What the planning board recommend... I don't want to take your time, Mrs. Savelo.
Okay, all right. No, but I know what you're saying, and I need to answer you because you always give false information, and I can't answer you.
That's not true.
No. The planning board said, "We recommend that the mayor and council listen to what the residents said." And all the residents, we fill the room, and I wish it were filmed so people could... so people could see because it's $8 million, not $6 million. And also, in keeping with safety, I would like, I would like a professional traffic study done in that area. We can't rely on Fran. Fran does not know traffic. Fran has said there's, there's 31 parking spaces. He has parking spaces on the corner where nobody can make the turn. He fudged 31 and he said there's 96. He has no fire zone. We're spending all this money, I would, I, I think, I know that we need a professional traffic study. We're all for safety in this thing and we should, I should be very frightened of what's, what's happening here. Because it's, there's no safety involved at all. So, I would recommend, before you spend this money, to do a public, a professional traffic study where these parking spaces can't. He, he didn't give us any space for the, for fire. There's no fire zone here. You're going to put 200 people in this building but no fire zone, how, how they're going to get out? He has parking on the corner when you can't navigate to turn. He has street parking, the 31 spaces, and they're not available because the residents have them. He's 100 parking spaces short. So, I highly recommend that if we're, we're keeping with all the safety tonight, that a professional traffic study be done.
Okay. Your three minutes is up, Mrs. Savelo. Thank you.
Okay, I need to hear your answer, John.
My answer was, and we're not going to go back and forth, Mrs. Savelo.
No, I know, I can't, but that's, that's the really part of not getting three minutes.
People came here and says, the agreement was at night to see, we would look into see about moving the building to another spot.
But not putting it there, that's what the residents want. They didn't want it there.
No, 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 no.
Yes, that's what they said. I'll get the transcripts.
I'm not going to speak because it's going to lead to back and forth. So, next, please.
Transparency is not the thing in this.
Good evening. I'm Joanna Cady, 373 DeWolf Place. Today, I'm here as a resident of Hackensack, but also actually as the, I run a statewide organization called the New Jersey Alliance for Immigrant Justice. We are a statewide organization that's working on immigrant sites, issues in New Jersey. And we have been working with multiple municipalities across the state to make them fair and welcoming. Jersey City is one of them. Many other cities across the state have already done so. I sent an email to your city manager a couple of days ago to offer up, to have a meeting with you. We actually have an immigrant rights group out of Hackensack and in Bergen County that are working on what policies can be put in place. While many cities have informal policies that say that they support immigrant communities, it's actually very important for us to put a lot of these things into code and make sure that our policies and protocols actually follow constitutional rights, but also make sure, obviously, that they don't oppose state and federal law. So, there are a lot of things the City of Hackensack can do. You guys can put clear protocols through your policy on police interaction with communities, community members, and also the interaction with ICE. We've seen cases where police has lied to, but federal agents, and then end up violating people's constitutional rights because they work with ICE unconstitutionally. You can establish policies that make sure that folks will not be discriminated based on their race, identity, et cetera, even though you might already have it. There might be some loopholes in there. We saw the recent case with Cliffside Park where people were not necessarily being the most inclusive of their community members. So, there's something you can do here on that. You can establish a municipal ID program. We actually have about 12 cities in the city, in the state, that have already done so and have used it as a many, a really good way of incrementing business and supporting community efforts. You can also commit to resources. I know you already have ESL and citizenship classes out of the library, but there are actually a lot of resources you can add to that. So, beyond just symbolic gestures that say we care about immigrants, and in Hackensack, we care about immigrants, there are actually concrete things you can put in place that makes your city safer and better. And finally, one thing that could be done is establish a commission, which would work with stakeholders, community members, and the city to really implement these policies and make sure they're doing, they're done right. Immigrant community members are actually being attacked. The City of Hackensack has many of them. Many of them are afraid to call the police. Many of them are afraid to come to the city for programs, for resources, for other ways that they can interact with your city. It actually makes all of us less safe because the further into the shadows we drive people, the less likely they are to work with us to make our city better. So, here as a resource, we have model policies. We have all the research. We have done all the work. We've worked with national organizations that are willing to support your efforts as well. And I'm here as a resource for that. So, thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
And, well, I can't speak for the rest of the council, but personally, I think it's a great idea and I, you know, if we could set up a meeting with two members of the council
Sure.
and your organization, that would be great.
Perfect, yeah. I, I actually have a copy of a letter that I sent to the city manager with information on it, so you guys can read it. It has the outline of what I've just discussed. We have a folk, a couple of folks who are from, from the city who can talk about some of those details too, but we're happy to work with you.
Very good.
And all your, all your contact information's on there?
Right.
Great, thank you.
Great, thank you, ma'am. Appreciate it. Next, please.
Hi.
Good evening.
I'm Patricia Henry. I live at 116 Spring Valley Avenue. I'm a member of this alliance and I'm only going to address a specific portion of the things that they want to address this evening, just so that I can come in within a three-minute time limit. So, given the current environment, I truly believe that as residents of this city, we need to stick together and support each other whenever we can. And that's the reason I'm here tonight. Other members of this organization will all address the other issues, but for me specifically, in order to, I, I want to address the need for our local police and government agencies to have a clearly written official policy that will codify these practices and make it clear for the public and the police how they should interact with immigrant community members and ICE. Specifically, the city can take actions without running into conflict with federal or state law or policy, and that's supported by research conducted by the ACLU and other national organizations. When our police departments interact with immigrants, immigration, law enforcement officers, and victims or witnesses of crime, they need to know exactly what their responsibilities are as officers of this city, not as employees of ICE. This includes understanding U-VISA certification with victims and witnesses of crime to apply for immigration relief. Some examples of actions that the City of Hackensack can take without running into any conflict with federal or state laws or policy are, one, that the City of Hackensack and its law enforcement officials and agents should not enter into a 287G agreements with the federal government that would deputize local law enforcement officers to act as ICE agents. Two, our law enforcement agents should not participate in joint operations with ICE, for example, setting up traffic stops or raids for purposes of immigration enforcement. That's a federal task. Our law enforcement agents should not stop, arrest, or detain people based on perceived or actual immigration status. In other words, they shouldn't be profiled or, or believe the person has committed an immigration offense. By the way, being undocumented is not a crime. Our police should not arrest, detain, or transfer individuals based on warrantless immigration detainers or administrative warrants, which they have been attempting to do. Oftentimes, ICE agents will attempt to use these types of warrants when, in fact, they are not enforceable. The only legal warrants that they can use against an immigrant are judicial warrants that are signed by circuit court judges. And oftentimes, we're seeing that they're presenting their own warrants that look very official and they're really not enforceable. And then, the city and/or police department should not allow ICE access to our city facilities, our property, equipment, or databases without a judicial warrant. Our, our immigrant families in the city are being terrorized by the rigorous, rigorous ICE activities conducted under the current federal administration. Research has shown that some families are so afraid of being picked up and detained by ICE that they're keeping their children out of school, not attending church, not, not shopping in local shops. Their, their victims of crime and witnesses to crimes are not coming forward because they're afraid they'll be detained. Their children are being traumatized, of their parents being deported.
James Henry, could you just finish up your sentence because you're at your three.
We need all our citizens to have a good relationship with the police department, one of security and trust. The, the police are here to protect all of us. If the immigrant community is afraid of the police, that, that relationship is going to move backwards.
Right. If there's more on there, if you.
Just a little more.
Well, feel free to leave it so I can read it or we can read it because I'd have to give every, we have a strict enforcement of the three-minute rule.
I haven't, I haven't, I need to edit this. So, what I have is got scribbles you're not going to even understand.
If you could email me.
Yes, I'm sorry.
All your stuff. I would appreciate it.
Absolutely.
And the city manager as well.
Can I ask her one question?
Sure.
Ma'am, all of this that you've identified, are any of these conditions present with the Hackensack Police Department that you're reporting?
I'm not, I'm not aware of that, but the, the point is, we need it in writing.
I, I get that, but when you read this into the record, it almost makes the public that watch this think that these conditions exist in the City of Hackensack. And I'm making the disclaimer publicly.
Yes.
That those conditions do not exist with this police department. You're trying to safeguard these people. I completely understand it. But I just want people to know that these conditions do not exist in this city and on this police department.
And I, and I, I believe you.
Okay.
But it needs to be, it needs to be documented. It needs to be clearly written.
Right.
In writing. It needs to have a protocol.
I, I totally agree. I, I, and that's why we're going to sit and have this meeting.
Great.
But I, I think the reason the city manager's doing that, should some of our police officers see this, they're going to take it upon themselves to think that they're being attacked in some way as doing these things and they haven't.
Contact in the middle.
This council's had meetings for DACA. We're 100% supportive of the culture of this city. I just, listen, I, I applaud your efforts. I just wanted to make sure that people understand that those conditions don't exist in this city because these folks and the people who work here work hard to make this better every day. We don't, we don't always hit the mark, but we're certainly working hard to get where we need to be and to make a unified city that people, doesn't matter where you were born, where you came from, but, you know, one, you're a citizen or maybe you're not a citizen in the United States, but, you know, one country under God. We're, we're all working towards that effort and that goal. That's all I'm trying to say.
I totally agree. I just feel it needs to be documented.
Yep.
So that everybody has a clear understanding.
That's why we're going to have the meeting, Mrs. Henry. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Appreciate it. Next, please.
Hi, I'm Paige Delvecchio, 19 Spring Valley Avenue. And I'm adding my voice, although I'm really happy to see such a receptive response to this issue. I sought out the New Jersey Alliance for Immigrant Justice because of my own interest. And in our city, we are fair and welcoming, which is the term that we're using. Across the state, we have a governor election coming up and their sanctuary state is just a really lightning rod topic right now. And it needs to be, you know, I just feel like we need to go on the record in Hackensack, kind of eat a leader because we are. We are diverse. We welcome our community and all of our neighbors. And we need to talk about, there's no such thing as a sanctuary city. ICE can come in and detain immigrants. It's our goal to continue what has been Hackensack's maybe unwritten policy of not using local law enforcement to do federal work. So, we do appreciate that. We have talked about the fact that, you know, our city's not harassing people or creating an unsafe environment. So, we'd just like to see it made official. And I know we have some nice programs at the library. The library does some citizen courses and ESL. We have a whole ESL program at the Hackensack, in the public schools. And I'd love to see that expanded too, as we go forward, to make it even better for all of our immigrants. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Delvecchio. Sir, how are you?
Hello. Councilmembers, mayor, city manager.
Could you just give your name and address to the clerk?
Peter Jamison, 66 Euclid, Hackensack.
Thank you.
I want to, first of all, thank you for your time this evening and I want to thank you for your service. I've been here for 10 years in this city. I grew up in Bergen County and as I see your service unfold in this city, I'm very pleased with what I see. So, let me start out with that.
Thank you.
And I want, I am a member of the Hackensack Immigrant Strategy Group, which is an offshoot of the Bergen County Immigration Strategy Group, which is an offshoot of the New Jersey, New Jersey Alliance for Immigration Justice, Immigrant Justice. I also work with Bergen People Power, which is an offshoot of the ACLU Freedom Cities I'm going to read a mercifully short statement. I'm, I'm not the best extemporaneous speaker in the world, so I'll read this. "Today, I rise to speak to you about the fear in our community and how fair and welcoming policies can help. Because of the recent crackdown by the federal government, some residents in Hackensack are demonstrably in fear on our very streets, not somewhere in a faraway city, our streets. Some of our businesses say business is down because people are afraid to come out. We have heard reports that our medical clinic, BVMI, has received cancellations because of this fear. Where will this stop? When children can no longer go to school? Moreover, by the way, this may get worse with ICE and the administration in 2008. However, please be aware that there are simple, cost-effective ways you can help. For example, immigrants and other vulnerable populations often lack a government-issued photo ID card. As a result, they face numerous and serious challenges. For example, they face difficulty in cashing checks, registering children for school, picking up children from school, getting prescriptions filled, or visiting doctors. Residents without identification can feel at risk or become frightened when they interact with police without an ID. They may not report a crime or become a witness. Without an ID, immigrants, homeless individuals, foster youth, senior citizens, transgender citizens, recent inmates, and others cannot show where they live. Municipal ID cards are a simple, easy, effective solution to this problem. The equipment is not expensive and the programs can pay for themselves with fees collected as they are issued. Municipalities across the country have launched identification card programs. They are a simple and cost-effective way to address these issues and build community. In New Jersey, 12 to 14 cities or towns already have this. Tonight, you have heard about fair and welcoming policies. I hope Hackensack can institute them, codify them, because I, Mr. Member, I, I agree with your comments that everybody in the city is doing a good job. I believe that. Right down to the core of my heart, I am a supporter of the police department. I report things when I see things are wrong. I, I try to be an effective citizen, although I work full-time and I'm not in town all day. But I hope that Hackensack can codify this stuff because, you know what? How do we know what's going on? Because we know for a fact that immigrants are not coming out. Our businesses have reported this to us.
All right. Mr. Jacobs, your three is up, but I'm, will you be at this meeting by chance?
I will.
He will be? So, I look forward to having this meeting, number one. If I could just get an answer from you on a couple of things. The ID card program, you mentioned the 12 to 14 towns. Could you just make sure we know what towns are doing and so we can reach out to them?
I'm going to run down that list right now?
We don't have to reinvent the wheel. We can kind of follow some of their protocols.
Would you like me to run down that list now or?
Um, just, if you want to write the list down and give it to the city manager, that would be fine. We can do that. But we can do all this at the meeting. That's really where the, a lot of this should take place because.
Very briefly, can I just jump in? I have a, a report.
Mm-hmm.
I have seven of them. I'd like to give it to the city clerk to distribute to you if that's all right.
Sure, absolutely.
Did you have, is there something else I could, another question?
Um, the name of your group was the Hackensack. It was a county, but now it's the Hackensack.
Hackensack Immigration Strategy Group.
Strategy Group.
Mm-hmm. And we work.
Strategy. Okay, thank you.
Kind of an organizing arm of the New Jersey Alliance for Immigrant Justice.
Very good. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you for your time.
Give that to the clerks, you'll get it to us and we'll move forward. He has all, the young lady, he has all your contact information, okay. Thanks, yes, sir.
Hi, everyone.
How are you, sir?
My name is Jose Martinez. I am 84 years old. I lived in the city of Hackensack for 50 years. In this house, I live in now 47. I came maybe three times here to give a complaint. I don't get complaints so easy. My only complaint is about property tax, and they're hurting me. That's the thing. I don't know how this room is not filled out with people. I got to tell you something. You sent a letter, I don't know who wrote the letter, that they said that they got to increase $25. And I got increased, you know how much? $785 this year. That they will be equal to 65, 42 cents every month. I had to tell you something more. I remember when the city, I used to pay $600. That was no big rise apartment in Proster Avenue. Everything was nice and messy. The city was beautiful city. Now it's noise, with much traffic, with the plane all around. But anyway, that's not my point. My point is that every time you take the food from my table, because my social security is 100, 1,005 every month. And my property tax is 755. So you let me go with 250 dollars every month to make my living. So I am 84 years old, I have to continue working every day to make my living. So you think that this is the American dream? No way, not with the American dream. Something is wrong. And you know why? There's no difference between if you are Republican or you are Democrat. That's the same thing. You act, who gave it to you the power to tell me that I have to pay 785 dollars more every month? No, every year, I'm sorry about more increase. When the social security, they said to me, look at that what they said to me here. There doesn't no permit increase and benefit when there is no increase in the cost of living. If there's no increase in the cost of living, why you increase so much property tax? So anytime you take something from my table. In winter, I cannot put the heat in my home. I tell you, 47 years living in the same home. I came here only maybe three times and always I give a complaint about property tax. You have to do something. I think that the city has to run by people, very intelligent economy people, no politician. Politicians, they don't do nothing. I tell you, it's so easy. I know that you got so many problems. You have to fix the road, you have to do increase salary, everything. But you have to do something better.
Mr. Martinez, and I'm, I'm hearing you loud and clear. I'm just trying to do some numbers here while I'm talking to you. Okay. I know you've come to us before and yet you're saying you had a, I figure you, you said 785. I made an $800 increase, divided it by 12, which basically comes out to about $85 a month, I believe. You know, the city tax isn't the only tax you get. And I'm not here to throw the tax on, on everybody else, but the school tax went up incredibly high this year, all right? Of your $85 a month, probably about $60 a month that went up for the schools, all right? And you have the county tax, all right? It's a bigger city than when you moved here. You're here 40-something years, I think you're, you know... 50, 50 years ago, you've been living in the same house for 47 years, I believe you said. You know, it, it's definitely a different city than it was then. It, the population has increased tremendously. Things have changed tremendously. I, I understand you, you might not be happy with that, but that was progress and, you know...
But the progress is coming for better, not for worse. Because the, the city collects so many millions with the high-rise apartment. And they don't make my living a little better. I cannot move, what is it, they said to me, move to Texas when you want to pay 1,000.
Right.
I am 84, I cannot go to Texas to die right there when I spend my whole life here.
Understood, understood. I have no plan on moving to Texas either.
But that has to be something, has to be something.
One, one thing I can tell you that we are working on, because you, you said you're 85 years old?
84.
84, God bless you.
Yeah.
We are working on something with our CFO for seniors who are on social security and that's their only income. If it's below a certain amount, they will get a tax break. We are working on that. Been working on it for about six months now. It's going to take a while to institute.
I hope.
We have to come up with a, we have to come up with a threshold number that's fair to everybody and that the city can handle. So, but that, that is our plan. Because property taxes are, you know, it's a set number for everybody. So the only way we can help seniors is to actually give seniors a tax break.
I know that you tried, you working very hard.
We're working hard, yeah. And I, and I, you know, I pay taxes too. I'm paying, you know, I pay $11,000 for a 60-by-100-foot piece of property.
You have to cut a corner too, you have to cut expensive. There are so many people in the city that they make so many good pay, so many good pay.
You're right.
With my money and the money of everybody here.
Our money, our, my money too.
Yeah, your money too, but maybe you make something good, I don't know that.
No, you, you know what I mean, you know what I get for mayor? You don't want to know.
I tell you, if I will be there, it's so easy to be a politician, it's so easy. The first thing you have to be honest. And the second thing that you have to do is looking for citizens, you know? Mostly for all people, that they don't make a living.
All right. I'm going to get to the next, but let me, let me tell you, just, just so you know that, because a lot of people think mayors and councils are like, out there becoming rich. We make, we make, I make $13,000 a year and the people beside me make $10,400 a year. That's, that's our salary for running the city, so it's...
Yeah, but that's all on you.
Yeah, it's more of, and, and a lot of that money goes back to the city, but... Thank you. Mr. Servo, how are you today?
I'm good, how are you?
I'm good.
You know, John Marshall, our Supreme Court Justice of, from the past. You, you know, he said that the power to tax involves the power to destroy, okay? And he said that in McCullough versus Maryland, if, if our city attorney is interested in, in the law, okay? So let's, let's start with, again, the, the, the wishes of the planning board were to relocate that M&M monstrosity that's going to be put there. And I, and I think you're, you're going to go against that. I, I think it's, I think it's wrong. I think it's, it's the people's wishes to not have that there in that tight neighborhood. And I think, as Kathy said, maybe a proclamation is needed because you're going to go forward with it and spend the public's money. Okay, so let's, let's, let's move on. Also, you know, I, I have a, a problem with no discussion anymore about tax abatements. That was huge last year. It's gone. No one wants to talk about it, okay? But I do, all right? There's no pilot money coming in at all from those proj, from those projects. And so when's, when is someone going to pay some taxes, John? When it comes to the development projects, okay? When are tax funds going to be coming into the city to help us, you know, alleviate the cost to maybe some of the homeowners, okay? Okay, that's, that's that. The hospital, you, it's a good time to negotiate with the hospital before this nonprofit and profit realization comes to be. So why not negotiate with them now, okay? Also, no one wants to talk about it. We want to praise the Medical Center, but the third cause of death in the United States behind heart disease and cancer are hospital deaths, hospital mistakes, okay? Now, if, if that's not going to be discussed, I'm going to discuss it here every time I'm here until someone comes, comes forward. You work for the Medical Center. They need to come out and say what's going on there? There's, there's over 400,000 deaths in the United States attributed to mistakes at medical centers. Now, we must have a chunk of them here. So all we hear is praise about the Medical Center. It's, it is a great place, okay? There's lots going on there, but there's lots that's not, not so great there, okay? So please, I'm going to bring it up every meeting. And maybe that's one of the reasons we're getting censored here. The public is being censored. We only have three minutes now. So we, for those three minutes, because we've been cut down, we're going to talk about things you don't want to talk about, okay? Also, my taxes, you said...
Mr. Servo, your three is up.
You said you'd look over at my taxes because two, two meetings ago, you, I, I told you my taxes were, were raised seven and a half percent. And you said, okay. So I brought my tax bill in.
Mr. Servo, your time is up. You leave it with the, the city manager, but Deputy Mayor Canestrino is going to answer your questions as far as tax abatements, when and how much, who's paying? Also, hospital negotiations. And for my own personal use, next time, please bring documentation on where hospital deaths are the third largest cause of deaths in the United States. Bring me documentation.
All right, very quickly, tax abatement monies, Richard, are paid when they, when the buildings officially have COs, certificate of occupancies. The only project officially that has opened with a pilot agreement is the one on State and Warren and that they have made their payments and are continuing to make their payments. In addition to that, we've had one other residential property open on Polyfly Road called The View and that's a fully taxable entity and they, of course, are paying their taxes as well. So those two projects are absolutely contributing to the tax dollars within the city. As we, you know, would love to have these projects open up, one, two, three. It, you know, to build a project to the magnitude that we're seeing on Main Street, it does take time. And I'm, I'm going to tell you, Richard, we're not going to go back and forth.
No, back and forth.
I'm going to tell you, I'm going to answer you truthfully. We're not going to go back and forth, Richard. In 2018, it's probably going to be a quiet year with all the construction going on, but I think in 2019, we're going to see a significant improvement in the funds coming from these properties. As far as Hackensack University Medical Center, we, actually, the city is having a meeting tomorrow again to talk about finances with the Medical Center. When we have information we can share, of course, we'll be happy to share it with you. But we continue to pursue this as we always do with the Medical Center.
I just want to add to that too, that, you know, the misconception about pilots. The school and the city both get paid the land tax all the time, all the time. Even though the buildings aren't up, the land tax is still being paid and that is divided between the city and the schools.
And the county.
And the county. I mean, and that's pretty much, even after the buildings are up, schools and county and the city receive their share, equal share from the land tax and the pilot is totally separate, it goes to the municipality just based on the building. Just wanted to clear that up. Next, please.
Good evening, Cassine Gaines, 373 Dewolf Place. I just wanted to clarify for, for the record and for the gentleman who was up here just a couple of moments ago talking about property taxes, because it hit my ear so bizarrely that out of an $85 a month raise, that $60 of that was attributed to the school. So I actually pulled up the numbers, which are just publicly available.
Right.
And the average home in Hackensack between 2016 and 2017 is seeing a $6.73 a month increase due to the school budget. So I was just curious, since we were talking about, well, okay, so I would, so I'm curious and I will, I will happily yield the rest of my time. Deputy Mayor Canestrino, since you said that that is not true, can you please let me know where you get your information from and where, what the numbers are?
You have to take multiple things into consideration. You have to also look at if the assessed value of that property had changed.
Which is not the responsibility of the school.
Which is the reality of life.
No, I, I, of course, I'm not, I'm not...
You know, things, think, things...
Wait, can I, can I make a deal with you? I just want to say one more thing and then I will stop and I will let you speak, I promise. I just want to be clear for, for everyone who's listening, because it's important, that the assessed value is not the responsibility of the school system. If his taxes went up, that is not because the school taxes went up. That is not the fault of the school system. That is the result of reassessments. So I just want to make that clear so there isn't a misconception for the gentleman who's here or for anyone who's watching.
Now, there's a distribution. What you're not taking into consideration is that the school budget increased by $5 million this year, which is, you know, a very large amount of money, much larger than it is in most years. And if you look across the board at increases, because we've done that, we've done our comparison, for every taxpayer in the city predominantly, on an average, two-thirds of the increase this year is attributable to the school increase. Now, what was somewhat fortunate, where you're coming up with your $6, is in, from 2015 to 2016, most of the people on average saw a reduction in their taxes, both from the school and from the city side. And that was because of the full reassessment that was done throughout the city. As we've indicated throughout, we're doing rolling assessments here throughout the city. So you are going to see adjustments made in most years. But it is still the responsibility of the city and the school system to control their expenditures and keep those increases to a minimum.
I completely agree with you.
Let me finish, so with a $5 million...
I only have three minutes, so...
With a $5 million increase, the, this year from the schools, two-thirds of the increase in most folks' property taxes this year is attributable to the increase in the school budget.
I just want to be clear again for the gentleman who's talking about the total increase for a month. I'm just going to wrap with this one sentence.
Go ahead.
The total increase for his annual budget, that, that is not solely the responsibility of the school system. As you said, reality of life, I, I agree with you, I understand what you're saying. But I just want to make that clear so that there isn't a misconception. So I just wanted to clarify that.
And I'll just add to that, that the conception is that the school budget did increase by $5 million.
Which is 2%, and that's the same 2% that it is always, it's capped by the state.
It is more than 2% when you look at the $5 million and you can do the math.
That is incorrect.
You can do the math. It was, you have a, a budget that's only a little over $100 million. So when you have a $5 million increase, that's more than 2%. And in addition to that, the school received additional funding of $2 million. And that $2 million, we were hoping would have been applied to offset some of this $5 million and help the taxpayers in the city, but it was not. And that's, again, the choice of the Board of Education to make that decision. But numbers-wise, you can take the data, you can analyze it, it's available numbers and you'll see that if folks increases this year, two-thirds of those increases directly relates to the school budget increases.
I just want to add, the, and no disrespect to the school. School has, the school has some major projects going on this year and that's why these numbers are so high. We have major, major work being done there and, and it is what it is. But I, I just want to make something clear too, because assessed values, Mr. Gaines is 100% correct. It's not the school's business to assess properties, it's our business and we do that. And that's why we did the rolling assessment program to try to get a grip on what we got hit with, with tax appeals. Close to 33 million now in tax appeals that we've been paying off. My point being is on those tax appeals, that 33 million, everybody got their share when they, right? When their, their taxes, the school got their share of that 33 million, the county got their share of that 33 million, and the city got a share of that 33 million. So if you did a 40, 40% for the schools, 40% for the city and, and, or 45 for the schools, 45 for the city and 10% for the county, all right? Just divvying it up that way, 45% of 33 million is what?
Maybe do the math backwards?
It's a lot of money.
$12 million, $13 million.
We paid that back. The city pays that back. The school doesn't have to pay that money back to all these people who appealed their taxes through the years. We do that. The municipality takes that on and, and pays all that money back. Basically, it's all going to, even if you were to pay it back, it would all come from the same kitty anyway. We're all going to pay it. So, but that's, you know, it, it's just a fact that's out there and that's, but it affects our budget. We have to bond, you know, in front of local finance board, three years in a row for seven-year bonds of, of over $10 million apiece to pay these things back. And that goes into the municipal budget, doesn't show up in any school, in any of the school budgets or, or the county budget. So it, I mean... Yes?
$14,850,000.
Oh, thank you, sir. Just under $15 million of it. But it's a lot of money and, but, and we're, we're, we're through it. We're through it.
And, and if I may add, we're certainly not being critical of money that's expended to support our children. Education is very, very important. You know, our youth is our future. But in all fairness, we have to attribute where that money is coming from. And, you know, the, these are the facts and these are the numbers. The Board of Education, the school system presented this information. The public accepted this information, voted on this information. And these are the wishes of the, of the, of the residents of this town. But we have to accept the responsibility that this is the contributing factor to the increase in the taxes. That's all, that's all I'm trying to say. I'm not being critical and I'm not in any way judging it. I'm just trying to explain that you have to attribute the source of where the increase came from.
My only point was that of, of this 85, of this $85 increase, $65 of it is not because of the school.
Six, $60 of it is from, is on the school increase. We, we can agree to disagree, Cassine, how's that?
It always works.
Sir, you're up. Sorry for the delay.
My name is Robert Marini. I currently live at 60 Erie Street, Dumont. Although I'm an executor to two properties right around the corner from the M&M Building due to the death of my brother. I've been here a couple of meetings in the past with a full-packed audience of residents in that area that did not want the M&M Building expansion. I was here for the planning board meeting and they also made a proposal that this council not have that building expanded either, all right? But apparently, you know, doesn't seem to be working. Like Kathleen Alvo said, oh, I think that a traffic study should be done now because of the tree layout of that area. You know, it's detrimental to the residents and the children. So I think that should do a traffic study before you do go ahead and proceed with what you want to do, all right? That's about all I have to say.
Thank you, sir.
All righty.
Anybody else from the public like to speak? Seeing none, motion to close. Roll call?
Councilmember Von Rudenberg?
Hi.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Hi.
Deputy Mayor Sims?
Hi.
Councilmember Pataglia?
Hi.
Mayor LaBrusco?
Hi.
All right. Comments from the council? Mr. Brian Rudenberg?
Good evening. Mr. Roy, it's good to see you again. I would be honored to work with you in any way possible. I met you through one of my coworkers, Ms. Congleton. As you know, I've, I've taught special education for the past 12 years and it's something I hold close to my heart. I've helped a lot of my students transition after graduating to different programs and Project Search in Bergen County, I don't know if you're familiar with that, so...
I am actually familiar with that.
Yeah, so any way possible, I'll definitely look forward to working with you. Ms. Delvecchio, Ms. Callie, I'm actually on the library board. So we, once a month, we go and we talk about all the different courses they offer. So after you speak with the mayor, if you want to discuss any other educational courses that could be offered at the library, I'd be happy to, you know, sit down with the director and you guys. I attended the Hackensack Alliance meeting this past month. It went well. Everyone involved in the group is very passionate about, passionate about what's going on with Hackensack Alliance. I think they're going to start hosting some town hall meetings on, I believe it's November 16th. They have a presentation by... They have a presentation by, taught by the U.S. National Dare Officer of the Year. It's very informational, and it's about the opioid crisis in the country. So it's a very good presentation to attend. It's actually at the Hackensack High School Auditorium, November sixteenth, seven P.M. to nine P.M. I think somebody said it might be on the Board of Ed's website, so if you want to check it out, I don't know if that, if it is or not, but I'll put some flyers over there. But it's, it's November sixteenth at seven P.M. at the Hackensack High School Auditorium. I attended the Halloween party at the rec center. It was a great time this past Saturday. The kids had a really great time, they all dressed up, they walked around the block in a little parade. So thanks to the rec department for, for hosting that. The Halloween haunted house at the library, we got there late. It seemed to be a hit because it was very crowded. I, I don't think they had the capacity to hold everybody, which is, you know, it was sad for the kids showing up, but it was also a good thing, it was a good sign that so many people went out for this event. So I think next year, we'll try to work on, you know, how we could figure that out, a better way to, to do that. And just another note regarding safety and the crosswalks. I was speaking with a resident on Ross Ave last week, and he had a lot of accolades for the city manager, and the response to getting the crosswalks there and addressing his needs. And he said, even if they didn't do the crosswalks, just, just the response time, and that they got back to me and answered my questions. You know, for a big city like this, I felt that the city manager really got back to him in a timely fashion and addressed his needs, so he wanted me to mention that, so I figured I would mention that tonight. That's all for now. Have a good night and get home safely.
Thank you.
Thanks, Steph. Just one thing in particular on the agenda tonight was the declaration of Continental Plaza as an area in need of rehabilitation. I think all of us are familiar with where Continental Plaza is located, up on Route four, opposite across the street from the shops at Riverside. You know, there's three towers there, they're aging, they're, you know, they're showing their wear and tear, and, you know, the current owners are now doing a, a total renovation of two of those towers and keeping it as office space, merging the three office space components into two. And then they're looking at the very first tower, which is the one closest to Route four, at doing a total renovation of that, where you would have some retail on the first level and actually have some residential above that. So again, this is another step in the right direction of taking properties that are maybe aging and not contributing as much as they have a potential to contribute to the tax rolls and see it improve. So, you know, that's another fine use, and, and we're happy to see the folks and the current owners investing in that particular property. Just a reminder of some dates coming up. Tomorrow is the meeting with the FAA at the Teterboro Airport, tomorrow at seven P.M. at the airport property on, on Munaki Avenue. I will be there. I hope to see some of our residents there. It's an important meeting for us. The FAA will be there, and they will be presenting information on alternate flight paths for us, you know, which, again, we want to move those, the planes, the low-flying planes away from Prospect Avenue and from the medical center. So it's important for us to be there and participate and show our support that, that we're willing to, you know, work together and, and have some of this accomplished. Performing Arts Center, I, I know Ted mentioned that we're looking at, you know, opening night is already sold out for November eleventh. So much, and it was done in, in such advance that we were able to convince the folks to do a matinee on Sunday, so anyone who's interested, there are still tickets available for the Sunday matinee, it'll be Sunday at three o'clock in the afternoon, that's November the twelfth. You can go to the website, go to the city's website, and follow the link there to the cultural arts website, and you could still purchase your ticket, should you be interested. Also, on November eleventh, we will be supporting Veterans Day at eleven A.M. in the morning, down on the green, that's across from the courthouse. You know, we'll be there, and we hope to see folks, and again, you know, it's wonderful to come out and recognize those that keep us safe and provide the wonderful, wonderful lives that we have here and continue to feel safe in this country. Ted also mentioned our goal-setting meeting, that's this Saturday at eight A.M., did you say, Ted?
Eight.
Eight o'clock in the morning here. You know, we, again, in effort to be transparent, we're going to go through and discuss, we've cut, Ted has collected information from the council, he's collected information from all of the department heads in the city, as what types of things we should be looking into in the next few years, kind of putting a short-term plan together, one year, three year, et cetera, things that need to be done, and when it makes economic sense to do so. Public is invited, you know, and you could hear us, and, you know, actively work on this plan, and of course, you know, share your opinions of it as well. So we look forward to seeing some folks there, too. Again, have a nice evening. Thanks, everyone, for coming out tonight.
Thank you. David?
Last Saturday, I joined the Girl Scout Cadet Troop Fifty-seven, eighty-six, as we put eight ribbons around a few trees on Summit Ave and First Street. To see these little girls put these ribbons around these trees in honor of Breast Cancer Month, it was just amazing. Diversity, in this town, last week, we had three restaurants open up. One on Essex Street, a Dominican restaurant. One on Main Street, an Argentinian restaurant. And on Central Avenue, a Filipino charcoal grill restaurant. I love my city. As Stephanie said, last week, I attended the Halloween party at the library. They totally made it into a haunted house with spider webs all over, glow-in-the-dark, face painting, a maze downstairs. If you've ever been in the library, it was wonderful. The sad part, they only allowed, they were at the capacity of three hundred kids inside the library, with about two hundred waiting outside who couldn't get in. So hopefully, next year, they come up with a plan or something where they close the library after an hour and make everyone leave, and then let the other group in. They got to come up with another plan. This Saturday, we have Slam the Dunk, the Junk. We're going to meet at the new Cultural Arts Center at nine o'clock. Various groups are going to pick certain parks throughout the city, have a continental breakfast at nine, at nine A.M., and come back at one P.M. to the Cultural Arts Center for, for lunch, pizza, and they'll get T-shirts. November first, there was a gentleman, for the past two years have been coming here, James Irwin, and he's been pushing for no smoking and, or to raise the smoking limit to twenty-one. November first, that goes into effect in the state of New Jersey, where stores cannot sell cigarettes to anyone under the age of twenty-one.
Do you hear that, Richard?
I want to say, wish the mayor happy birthday.
Thank you.
His birthday is tonight.
Twenty-one.
Allison's birthday is tomorrow, I want to say happy birthday.
Twenty, I'm twenty-one, by the way. Yeah, okay.
On Monday, me, John, and Kathy are going down to South Orange for the 2017 Planning Excellence Award reception. Our Atlantic Street Park and our Cultural Arts Building was nominated 2017 Hackensack Great Place Awards. So that's kudos to the city. Last thing, today is a sad but good day. My dad passed away last year, October twenty-fourth. This hat is in honor of him tonight. He's in a great place, he's not suffering anymore, and if you don't mind, if we could just have a moment of silence for him.
Sure.
We had to continue inspecting the city trees to prevent accidents. Today, we got like about nine or ten trees that went down our city, so we had to continue with that. And we continue like talking with the city manager, like almost twice a week, to try to improve the city. The railroad crossings, I think that we got one more to go by Berry Street. We already got in touch for, I think, many times, with the PSNG to try to improve the lighting in the city, to try to control the speeding and spring ballet and different streets in the city, especially around the school. Still, I am saying that we should use table bumper, that they're not so high like the speed bumper, but that may be for the people to, to slow down. And we received, as the city council guys, a report from a new company in the city that the name is Bribe Engineer. And I suggest to you, Ted, that that type of report should be on the website, and the way that will provide information to the resident of what the hell you're going to do in the city, and the way they know about the repair, the inspections, and the two-way Main Street, and anything they get in the city, they're going to get done, it's going to be there. And the way people got all the information, because we don't try to hide anything from anybody. We don't have to. Okay? Thank you, guys, for coming.
I have one more remark. This Saturday at eleven A.M., we're having a groundbreaking ceremony at the M and M Building.
Wow, big secret. They have a big secret. One more thing before I forget. We're going to need, that's only a suggestion, the crossing guard in Washington Avenue and Munaki. Okay? Okay, Ross?
Well, good. Okay. As Dave mentioned, next week, we're going down. Hackensack was honored to receive the award for best places for Atlantic Street Park and our Cultural Arts Center. It was number one, and actually got a score of a hundred percent. So it was a great, great, great honor for the city to get that. Kudos to DMR and the vision of everybody involved in putting that together, and we all made it a reality, the citizens and, and this council. Safety, we're talking about making the streets safer tomorrow, safer tomorrow. I have a meeting with, it's called Street Smarts, an organization. Our police department is working with them this month, and for the next four weeks, there'll be a campaign, just as I bring it up here. Tomorrow, the campaign kicks off. Bear with me one second. Hackensack today kicked off a month-long safety program named Making Travel Safer for Pedestrians in the City. It focuses on several different things, education, being awareness, being aware, not being distracted while you're driving, you know, texting and driving, things like that. And I don't know if any of you have ever tried to text and drive, but it is, it is ridiculously dangerous, because I've, you know, even looking at your phone to see who's calling sometimes, and you look up, and you're like, whoa. So I, I can see where somebody's actually trying to carry a conversation by typing on these devices while they're driving, it's very, very dangerous. But this is going to be kicked off tomorrow, actually, ten-thirty at the hospital, the city's involved. Easy Ride is a company, Hackensack University Medical Center, and you'll see stuff going on this month, and, you know, there will be people jaywalking. I advise you not to jaywalk this month, because they will be giving out tickets for jaywalking. And it's, we discussed it before, it's very, very dangerous to put crosswalks in the middle of a long block. And I'll tell you why, because it's, it's, it's an accident waiting to happen. On a short block, right by the hospital, you have Thompson Avenue there, they put up, they did put up a crosswalk in the middle of a block there, but it's only maybe a hundred yards away from the traffic light, but I got to tell you, you take your life in your hands walking across that crosswalk, even though there's blinking lights, even though there's a pedestrian crosswalk there, even though there's a pedestrian sign there, people just don't stop. They don't, they don't stop. It's amazing. They literally will come to a screeching halt to stop from hitting you, but very, very dangerous. So, you know, our traffic department has never been in favor of putting crosswalks in the middle of a block. Now, that, that said, when you live on the Esplanade, and I'm well, I live close to that street, it's literally five blocks long or more without a crosswalk. So, yeah, to get across the street is, is quite a walk. And you have, you have a school there as well, and parents park on, on the other side of the Esplanade, which is on the Maywood side, and their kids will run across the street, you know, and there's no crosswalk there, nor do we have a crossing guard there, so it's very, very dangerous. We spoke about the leaf bags. Now, we got to get a push on this, because I'm not seeing any leaf bags out there, but I'm seeing a lot of leaves in this, piled in the street, and I'm going to really, really beg the citizens to give this a shot, and get down to the DBW, pick up your bags, and try bagging them, all right? If it works, it works. If not, it doesn't, but we got to give it a shot, we got to make it a worthwhile effort. I'm going to make it, you know, my duty to do this, I'm going to make sure I bag my leaves this year and see if it works. I do notice with the wind today, tons of leaves on the sewer grates, because we had a torrential downpour along with heavy winds, and the leaves that did come down are all stacked on top of the sewer grates, and that's how we get our flooding, folks, so... And as you mentioned, the DEP is totally in favor of doing this. Think back to when we started recycling, think back twenty years ago. It was, nobody wanted to do it, even more than that. We were like, what do you mean, separate our garbage? Everything was garbage. Plastic was garbage, tin cans, metal cans, aluminum cans, it was all garbage. Now we separate all that stuff, paper, you know, we take the time to do it, so, you know, it had to, we had to train ourselves to do it, we're going to have to try to train ourselves to do this. The H-Pac, Hack Pac, as was mentioned, is opening on November eleventh for its first show, and we did add that second show that was mentioned. And the schools, Cassine, don't, again, don't take it the wrong way, we're all going to work together here, and looking, I'm looking forward to turning the corner where the school system and there's Board of Ed and this city can work together, and these conversations won't even ever take place, because there'll, there'll be some harmony. I'm really looking forward to that. That said, the school, we know, has some huge projects this year, and that's why those numbers are up. I think they're doing a major, major renovation of the high school fields, which are well-needed to keep our kids safe and make sports enjoyable and, and less injuries, along with some other major projects going on over there. So these are, these are necessities, and we understand that, you know, the city also spends money, and we know, you know, it takes money to, to, to keep things running. To the immigration thing, I'm looking forward to working hand-in-hand with you guys. I can tell you right now, you know, I was never in favor of any police department becoming ICE agents, especially ours. It's, we go by the Attorney General Guideline rules of the state of New Jersey, if I'm not mistaken, and we follow those rules right now, and that pretty much protects, should protect everybody. I'm not saying that's happening, but it should. And that's why I'm looking forward to sit down and see, you know, get, you know, hear what you guys are saying, so I can look into it, and maybe we can put something in writing and get some codification on these things. And I look forward to really working with you guys. Clinton Place, it's that time, it's Halloween, get over there, it's only another week, right? Week from today, and they'll be banging it up. And Slam Dunk the Junk is Saturday, nine o'clock, your meeting? Nine o'clock at the Cultural Arts, or Atlantic Street Park Cultural Arts Center. Go down and help clean up the city. We get some great groups there, Boy Scouts, Girl Scouts, different organizations come down and help. And you get to go to different parts of the city and see it, too, it's pretty cool. And with that, I want to wish everybody a safe trip home, and we'll see you in a couple weeks. Yes?
Need a motion?
You have a what? Coffee?
Need a motion?
Motion to close.
Back in.
Hold up a favor?
Aye.